I'm reciting the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are a number of people here that I'm going to just items on the agenda without objection of the council, but the first item this evening is Rebecca Lynn Peterson is here from West Central Initiative, and she'd like to, and I'll go back to the minutes in the consent agenda after we get through some of this stuff. Rebecca Lynn Peterson's here from West Central Initiative, and she'd like to address the council this evening with an annual update. Welcome Rebecca.
Thank you. I think the microphone's a little tipsy here. There we go. Can you hear me okay? Thank you so much for inviting us back, mayor, council members, staff and guests. It's always a pleasure to come and address you and tell you what West Central Initiative has been up to, and thank you for your continued support. I believe, Kelsey, we're in the third year of a three-year pledge based on a strategic plan, which you have before you, and we'll start doing our next strategic planning in the next year. Ron Zeeland here is on our EDD board, so he's a little bit familiar with our work. And before you today, I just wanted to point out a lot of the work that we do in economic development, which you invest in, and our planning work has just resulted in the completion of our next five-year comprehensive economic development strategy, which we call the SEDs. As the regional development organization for our region, this is the work that we embark on. And so if you go to page six, it's just a brief summary of the phases that we went through to gather this information and disseminate it. And we've been hearing a lot about workforce development, about childcare, as you all know, and about housing. But we also heard about others, six other work areas that are needing our attention. Business development, access to education, resilient infrastructure, transportation, circular agriculture, equity and inclusion, parks and recreation. So I welcome you to read this and ask us any questions or give us any feedback. I also welcome any information that I can take back to my colleagues about needs for your community. And I did get a printout just before I left the office about the investments that we've made back into your community this past year. We did $719,958 in grants. About half of that came through the funding from DED for the small business relief grants. There were 38 of those made in your community for $10,000 each, as well as a number of childcare emergency grants that we made. And this was all money that we took into our accounting and then redistributed where it was needed. So our planning and economic development people have been really busy this year. And then I just wanted to point out my work in development and my colleagues who work with all of our over 200 funds. We have six of those funds right here in Detroit Lakes. The Detroit Lakes Area Community Foundation, the DL Athletic Foundation, the DL Loan Fund, the DL Public Education Foundation, and the DL Public Library Endowment. So we have a very busy, active community. Any questions for me or anything that you want me to take back to my colleagues at WCI?
Any questions from the council or comments?
Well, one of the things that Rebecca, that they work on West Central is a big deal with childcare right now. I think there was, what'd you say, 600 slots that last week we had in Becker County?
Right.
And that's a big move for them this time of year.
And I know that our early childhood people are working with Becker County on a strategic plan, how to address this. I think every county that we're working with right now, we serve nine counties, is addressing childcare. In fact, we're working with Stevens County and Grant County as well. And we hope that Becker County can be an example and a prototype for how we address this issue. I think the biggest problem is that our people in the childcare industry really don't make a working wage, a living wage, sorry. They make a working wage, but, and that it costs a lot of money to put your kids in a daycare center, especially if you have more than one child. So I think with some of the ARP money, there's an opportunity to maybe do some gap funding there. So we're working on that as well. Thank you, Mr. Zeeland.
Any other questions for Rebecca? Well, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your investment in our community.
And we'll be in touch through your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, I'd like to move to agenda item 5D. Mr. and Mrs. Whitmore are here, and that will be under the Community Development Committee. I think Matt, you're going to take that, right?
Yes, sir. There is a new handout from Resolution laying on the desk in front of you. This was discussed last night at CDC, the new resolution to approve an expansion of a non-conforming use to allow a 10 by 12-foot addition to a deck with a 37-foot setback from the ordinary high watermark at 1239 Long Beach Drive. We discussed this last night at CDC, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the expansion of a non-conforming use to allow an addition to a deck at 1239 Long Beach Drive. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Without objection, can we jump to item 5F, Matt?
Yes, we can. Item 5F, consideration to a resolution approving to amend an amended variance to allow 343 parking spaces instead of the required 408 spaces, a zero-foot setback for parking spaces, and a waiver in payment in lieu of spaces to allow future lot division at 1305 Highway 10 West, which is the Boys and Girls Club thrift store. This was discussed last night at CDC. We think there were some positive changes made here with the staff and business owners out there, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve an amended variance to allow 343 parking spaces instead of the required 408 at 1305 Highway 10 West. Discussion on the motion?
I'm in favor of this project, but I, again, parking is a big deal every place. And when you start whacking down 60, 70 extra spots, it does make a difference when both of those businesses are busy out there. But I'm glad that we're going to have this new store coming, so I'm going to vote for it. But I just, I just think we have to be aware of parking spaces because that is a big deal nowadays.
Okay, further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Without objection from the council, I'd like to take up item 10D on the agenda, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Roberts to introduce our guests this evening from Missouri River.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have Karen Olson and Evan Liebens from Missouri River Energy Services. They worked on a municipal power advantage report for Detroit Lakes Public Utilities Commission. Evan's going to give us a little bit of an update on what they found in that report and the advantages of having a municipal electric utility.
Evan, thank you. Thanks, Vrenell, and thanks, council. As Vrenell mentioned here, happy presentation. Hopefully it won't take up too much of your time, but this is a municipal power advantage report that really takes a look at the tangible, so mostly financial related, and also the intangible benefits of having a municipal utility located here in Detroit Lakes. So again, goals of the report, determining that value of the just mentioned, educating policymakers and customers. You know, one thing we often find as we go out into the communities is that the policymakers, customers in town, don't necessarily understand or know where your electricity comes from, nor do they oftentimes care. They just want, you know, a house that's temperature controlled, et cetera. So this report lays out, again, just kind of an increased attention to that with the intent to increase customer engagement and awareness of services and programs offered, and then also discuss some of the services that MRES has that benefit Detroit Lakes and that Detroit Lakes takes advantage of. So first, getting into the financial benefits of those. First and foremost and the largest financial benefit is your wholesale power and supply, power supply and transmission, excuse me. Way over there on the left side in the green is Detroit Lakes' average purchased power and transmission cost at about 5.6 cents per kilowatt hour. There's 20 other utilities in blue there that are representative of other wholesale entities in the Midwest, ranging from, you know, 5.9 cents per kilowatt hour, excuse me, all the way up to about 8.5. The average of those is 7.1. So again, that difference there is about a cent and a half. And here, we take a look at what that actually translates to in terms of dollar savings. So that cent and a half difference, again, from the regional average to Detroit Lakes' 2020 power costs times 193 million kilowatt hours that were purchased in 2020, comes up with a savings of about just under $2.9 million. So again, a real tangible dollar there of about 2.9 million. Taking a look at this on a little bit more scale that maybe makes sense to more people, 800 kilowatt hours is what a typical residential customer uses. So that's a savings of about $12 per month per residential customer. So again, a pretty substantial savings, and this is just one aspect of the whole picture. Another valuable asset of having municipal utility, of course, is the transfer that the electric utility makes to the city's general fund. In 2017, this is about 535,000. This has since increased to just over 600,000. And you can see projecting that to remain around that 605,000 for the next couple of years. This cash transfer from the electric utility over to the city really represents the rate of return for the city's investment in initially forming the electric utility. And it also supports city services that, you know, potentially would maybe not be funded or have to find another funding source. So again, a pretty substantial chunk of change there that comes directly from your municipality-owned utility. Some other financial contributions, and these are somewhat smaller, but yet still meaningful. Detroit Lakes Community Cultural Center, $100,000 the electric utility has committed for the next several years. Becker County Historical Society, $50,000 over the next several years, including free lighting, about another $45,000. Working directly with the Development Authority Fund and Debt Service Funds for about 2.7 million. They've advanced for, again, industrial development and other loans. And then also some smaller cash transfers for Special Olympics, United Way, post-pram, and other things. In addition to just the cash portion, of course, there's the labor that has contributed as well. Labor and equipment that is used for Polar Fest, Street Fair, We Fest, you know, hanging decorations as you drive down several of the different streets. There's banners and things like that that are hung up there, assisted with the electric utility and the bucket truck. So items like that that would maybe otherwise need to be used in less safe manners or possibly have to be contracted out by a third party. They also participate in some low-income mobile home efficiency projects and the Grow Minnesota Chamber participation. So I previously mentioned the wholesale side of things. So again, that's the cost per kilowatt hour that Detroit Lakes to get, pays to get essentially power to the door, to the edge of the community. And then there's the impact portion that actually is the bill that each of the residents and commercial customers pay. So impacts that actually affect that. That wholesale power cost is about 50 to 70% of the total cost of those retail bills. So that's a big portion of it, you know, depending on the business cycle, capital improvements, other things like that, equipment replacement. Of course, those can play a big factor too on the competitiveness of bills, depending if a community's, you know, has substantial investments in capital projects or new substation, things like that that are going. And then the last couple there, level of transfers and donated services. Again, I outlined several transfers and other donated services that the electric utility makes. And of course, the higher level of those transfers, the more or less competitive that electric bill may be. And then lastly, cost-based rates for all classes. So every three to five years, Detroit Lakes completes a cost of service study, essentially making sure that residential class, commercial class, industrial class, all of the classes are paying the share that they should be and ensuring rate equability amongst each classes. You know, if the residential bill was extremely competitive, but say, for example, the industrial class wasn't necessarily competitive, that can play into things as well. But looking at things here across the board, again, as those cost of service studies are done on a regular basis, you can see here that the impact as a percentage-wise for each customer classes is pretty similar. For example, on the residential class there, again, a typical user is about 800 kilowatt hours a month. Typical then bill for a month is about $96, just under $96. Comparing that with several investor-owned utilities in Minnesota, local REC's, that average bill is about $109. So a residential customer here pays just under $13, less than they would if served by an investor and utility or REC, for about a 14% lower bill, again, than they would pay under the other rate. And similar story for the general commercial single and three phase there, about 17 and 16%. So there's several other local benefits, again, that aren't necessarily tied to financial. Collaborating with the Detroit Lakes Development Authority. I know we've heard a little bit previously about some of the things that, doing with economic development and support, trying to bring new businesses in, and there are several success stories highlighted in the packet that you have in front of you, but just a few here. Accessories Unlimited having a new building consolidating several smaller ones. Great North Pizza Company, again, accommodating growth. And you've had some pretty substantial housing growth over the last several years. So again, we're working with, directly with the economic development to encourage new businesses, new customers. All those things play a direct, direct impact into the community here. Couple other local benefits, you know, having integrated utility operations and efficiencies, and being able to share billing and accounting software between the utility department and the city side, shared office and shop space, equipment and vehicles. Having a local customer service here instead of having to call a 800 number, and, you know, not sure where that's ringing to, but you actually have a office here where people can come in, ask questions about their bill, make a local payment, et cetera. And then lastly, there, local employee salaries and then supplies and services purchased locally. We looked at this, it's about $2.5 million per year for, again, local salaries that are here in Detroit Lakes, purchase supplies and services that get, you know, purchased in Detroit Lakes. Those dollars and revenue stay right here in town. Expanding on just a couple other things that Missouri River and in Detroit Lakes kind of do in a partnership here. This graph here takes a look at the 2020 power supply mix. You know, one thing that Missouri River takes a look at is ensuring that we have a diverse, yet cost-effective power supply mix. 36% here of your current purchased powers, I should say, this is from 2020, again, based on actuals. So about 36% of total purchased power in 2020 came from hydroelectric dams on Missouri River, so 100% renewable, and then also about 4% from wind. So again, about 40% of your current power supply is, you know, 100, or is, comes from renewable power sources. And this is expected to increase in 2021 and beyond. Missouri River recently completed a, another hydro project, actually another hydroelectric dam over in eastern Iowa that will be added to this power supply mix as well. Couple other things, having advantage of a local utility. You can upgrade to new technology in a time when it makes sense for you to, and also proactively thinking forward instead of having someone else make those decisions for you. So, you know, Detroit Lakes recently finished up on the electric side, installing advanced metering infrastructure for the electric customers, working on similar things for the water side, and then also looking to implement a meter data management system. So kind of the brains, I guess, if you will, of all this metering makes all the different aspects that go into billing and metering really talk to each other. So there's several different technologies here that having a local utility really allows for that discussion and that direction to come at a local level instead of more of a national level. Couple other things looking at as well is the upgrade to N code 10. Another has to do with the billing and financial system that the, both the city and utility side, excuse me, use. And then also looking at cybersecurity. You know, cybersecurity in today's day and age is bigger than it ever has been and a more serious threat than it ever has been. So again, staying ahead of technology and understanding where these threats are real and what to do if something like that happens. Couple other services that Missouri River has worked and partnered with Detroit Lakes on. 2019, worked with the city for strategic planning. I know there's future talks of working with Detroit Lakes Public Utilities on that as well. Communications, you know, Value of Public Power Campaign and community events and sponsorship. This has been a pretty big thing, again, getting the value of what public power is out in the community and do a real good job sharing that on Facebook and getting it out in news agencies and articles. The next slide actually talks about a couple of awards they've received for some of, some of these campaigns that they've completed. And then at the bottom there is other services, you know, recently, or actually next year I'll be looking at, working on electric and water rate studies. And again, those are completed every couple of years to ensure that rates are cost-based and fair and equitable for all customers. Again, as I mentioned here, these are American Public Power Association. They hand out awards every year, several awards here that Detroit Lakes has received over the last four years. I think one of the biggest and most telling here is the, what they call the RP3 Award, Reliable Public Power Provider. Detroit Lakes has received this since 2016. The last two years, they're actually platinum level, which is right up there with about as high as you can get. This takes a look at not only making sure the distribution system is in good shape, but it's constantly being updated. So again, they're doing a great job of making sure that the system is reliable and needs to be there when, when it needs to be utilized. The other couple of things here, 2017 and 18, again, I mentioned that they received some awards for the Public Power Communication Award. I know there was some video work done on this, I think some interviews, and also some social face, Facebook, social media posts, excuse me. 2019, there was a safety award, and then in 2020, again, a pretty big one, a Smart Energy Provider Award. Really shows a commitment to having energy efficiency, distributed generation, renewable energy, and really just be environmentally sensitive and cognizant and making sure that, you know, in doing things and doing business, we're also looking at the environment as well. So again, really some, some pretty great awards that have been handed out over the last couple of years for Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. Then kind of just wrapping up here, you know, the total benefit, again, the financial end and also the other non-tangible ones that we looked at here is about $3 million per year, or about $400 per customer per year. So some, some pretty significant savings here, some pretty significant real values and benefits for having your local utility. And that's all I have for the presentation. Unless anybody has any questions about anything they saw here. Again, there's a lot more detail of this in the packets that you have there.
Any questions for Evan? We all have these, right Evan?
Yep.
Any questions? Thank you. Very informative. We appreciate you coming and have a good trip home.
Thank you.
Thanks. Without objection of the council, I'd like to jump to item 7B, which is the budget and rates for the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center. Ron?
Okay, I'm going to have Heidi go over the budgets and rates. I'm going to have Peter give his presentation first, then we'll go over after he's done.
Hi, Peter.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So we're here to talk about budget, but before I do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about purpose and give you an update about your community center. COVID-19, you've heard about COVID? It's been a, it's been a challenging year for lots of places, including the community center. We were hit pretty hard with two significant closures. So over the last year, or during our last fiscal year, we were closed two separate occasions for about four months. And then certainly with some of the changes in how the delivery of service could be done to keep people safe during that time, it had a significant impact on utilization. So as a result, our memberships were down a little over 40%. At one point, we're currently sitting down about 38% of our members. We went into COVID with about 1,250 membership contracts and somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 members, because of family memberships. We're currently sitting just below 800. So that has been a big challenge. We're working on membership drives and trying to create new services and features and bringing some of the services that we had in the past back to bring our members back. But there's a lot of caution out there. Our Silver Group is another group of members that have Medicare Advantage benefits through their health plans. We have, I believe, prior to COVID, about 700. Right now, we're about 550 different Silver Members that come through the building and check in at least once or more per month. And prior to COVID, we're about $200,000 a year in revenue from that group. We're now down to about, this last year, we were down to about $90,000, just under $90,000. It's growing. They're actually, they're the group that's probably coming back the fastest. We used to average about 175 seniors coming through our doors every day. We're now at about 135. So they're, they're coming back, and I anticipate we will get back. We needed to cancel almost an entire season of shows in the theater, and we did a couple small shows in the spring. But we're obviously working on bringing the theater, theater back. So all in all, our earned revenue this last fiscal year compared to the previous year, it was impacted by about a million dollars, which was painful. Our payroll was down about 21%, and obviously the payroll protection loan impacted that. And also just having core staffing and maintenance and custodial services and all those kinds of things. Prior to COVID, we had about 110 people that were on the payroll at the community center, most of them part-time. I think we had 11 that were considered full-time. Now we have nine full-time, and we were, we, our payroll, we just finished. We had 75 employees on our payroll. So it's a significant number. Fewer employees, although the ones that are there are working more because we're struggling, like a lot of places, to find employees. So in spite of that, I just got to give a shout out to our staff and our volunteers. They have done, from my perspective, an incredible job of why we're here, which is to help to build community and provide resources and opportunities for our people in our community to learn, to grow and to play. And so initially during COVID, lots of virtual things, which were better than nothing, not great, but they kept people connected. In particular, our seniors stayed really connected through that time. We've done more outdoor programming than ever before, and we're finding our members like that. So thank you for the use of the band shell. We're continuing to do fitness classes out there as long as it stays tolerable, and that's gone well. We're, we're doing more outdoor programming for our seniors as well. We're just finishing a really good summer. We had really strong numbers in our summer day camp, our youth baseball, all the kinds of things that you, you help us do for recreation, both for youth and adults, has gone incredibly well, as well as record numbers of kids signing up for swimming lessons. And, and so those things are going well. Our fall season at the theater kicked off last Saturday night with a show at the band shell, or down, down in the park. And then we've got 25 concerts or performances in the theater scheduled over the next eight months. Fall programming's back. Pre-COVID, we did about 40, excuse me, about 70 fitness classes a week. We're doing about 40 now, and so those are coming. And we've had to do them all over in the building. So there's been bikes in our, when you guys were over there, you saw bikes in our ballroom and in our meeting rooms, and we, people did what they needed to do to, to provide opportunities for people to, to carry out our mission. As I mentioned, Silver Group is coming back. We've also seen a growing demand and interest in getting scholarship members for people who are in a financial hardship and want to be able to access our services. And so we're, we're providing scholarships. We recently started a youth scholarship program and a youth membership to provide access to kids. And that was, been funded with some money from donors and some money from Becker County. Much appreciated. So we're also just continuing to look for new ways because we need to generate new programs and new services. What it meant to be a community center before and what, what people are looking for now is, is changing. Thanks, last spring, I presented a plan to you to make some renovations and improvements to our ballroom, not only to provide a better experience to folks that come to the theater and come for events in the, in the ballroom now, but also to position our community to bring more events into our community going forward. And so we began working with the architect to come up with plans. Those plans are close to being completed. We hope to be at a portion where we could bid that out this fall and start construction in January. In order to do that, we needed to raise all of the money associated with that. And so we've, I, that's where I've been spending a lot of my time now, is having conversations with donors, writing grants, and we're doing extremely well. And in fact, our budget for that project was about $800,000. I've had numerous donors that have come and said, you know, if you're able to achieve those goals, you can use some of my money that I've contributed to make some really needed improvements. you can use, uh, some of my money that I've contributed to make some really needed improvements on the fitness side of the building. That this building was built twenty years ago and it's been showing its age and wear. And so we're just in the process of beginning to do some flooring replacements, some painting, some aesthetic improvements, furnishings, the kinds of things to make it appealing to people when they come in the front door, uh, do a, a redo to our locker rooms, putting some money into our pool, so some of those kinds of things. But all of that has basically come from fundraising and we're gonna continue to, to tell that story and continue to try to engage, uh, the community and businesses, uh, for that support. Um, we've been just tremendously, uh, uh, beneficial from, uh, businesses in town that have supported us. I just heard the mention of the Public Utilities Commission. We also had three other, uh, businesses that made long-term commitments to the community center to help us through, uh, that financial challenge. Um, we, you know, we didn't do any shows in the theater last year, but every one of our business, um, sponsors continued to honor their sponsorship. So, uh, we've been very fortunate of that. Friends of the theater, we started another program on the fitness side called Center Sustainers and we've had significant numbers of folks that have stepped forward recognizing, uh, the need to sustain the, the community center through their support. Um, so, from a, uh, financial standpoint, uh, and you're gonna go through the budget now, but, uh, you know, pre-COVID, about eighty percent of our revenue came from direct services and because of the reductions we've had, that's become a little more challenging. So we've really focused on, you know, controlling our costs, um, and, uh, also just aggressively pursuing any form of, whether it be payroll protection program loans, CARES Act funding, America Rescue Act funding, just making sure that we know those, where those dollars are our and how we can make sure that we're actively participating, writing grants, I mentioned business support and some of our other fundraising. And we're continuing to, to seek to look for partnerships with other businesses in town going forward. Um, as far as the budget goes, that Heidi's gonna review, we, we did, uh, uh, we're, we're beginning to budget for growth back, however, we're relatively conservative in that. Um, our, uh, we budgeted for three-hundred-thousand of that lost revenue to come back, uh, which is about twenty-three percent. I'm hoping that's conservative. Um, our memberships, uh, we budgeted to bring them back from where, where they're currently thirty-eight percent down to bring that up to thirty percent. A lot of that is dependent on how, when people feel comfortable coming back, uh, inside. Um, our, uh, ticket sales in the theater, we're, even though we've got shows coming back, we're budgeting about fifty-thousand dollars less of, less in theater revenue, uh, this year. Um, and then our salaries, our, our salaries are up from the last year, they remain down from where they were previously. We did budget a two-and-a-half percent, uh, increase for our staff. Uh, that, our sta- we've got a great staff and I would say they don't work there for the money. They work there for the mission, uh, they work there because, uh, they believe in, in what we do. And, uh, that being said, we also need people to do the work. And it has become very, very challenging to find lifeguards, uh, to keep the pool open. Uh, there are way more opportunities for kids today than there ever were before. Uh, finding custodians, front desk staff, all those kinds of things. So, uh, we've, we've had to make some additional adjustments in those areas. As far as rates go, we did not, uh, uh, recommend, uh, and our board is not, uh, recommending to change our membership fees, uh, this year, uh, and that's in, for, for two reasons. One, we're down thirty-eight percent of our members, we need to bring people back. Uh, second reason is, as we look around to other community centers in the Minnesota area, um, our, our rates are actually a little bit higher than theirs. When I look to Fargo-Moorhead, uh, at some of the facilities there, our rates are a little bit lower than theirs. So I think we're kind of competitively right about where we need to be and hopefully in a, in a place that will help us to bring our members back. Um, we are, we're budgeting for a loss this year, a fairly significant loss of about a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars on operations, a total loss of, uh, about three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, uh, and a, and a reduction in cash. Uh, what's not stated on there is the, that operating support from businesses and the public utilities that will help to offset, uh, offset that and then we'll continue to look for potential partnerships with other businesses going forward to do the same thing. Um, and then capital-wise, um, you can see in our budget, we are budgeting to spend this year, contingent on our ability to raise it, uh, just under one-point-three-million dollars. And, uh, we're well on our way to do that. Uh, so, uh, the only elements in our budget that are not fundraising this year is about fifty-five-thousand dollars. The rest of it is all coming from donations, from individuals, from businesses and from, uh, um, grants that we've been able to achieve. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. Ron, if you want.
I probably, is there any questions at this point for Peter? If not, I'll have Heidi give a report and, uh, on, on the community center and we'll go, go back from there then.
I might actually defer to Kelsey on this one.
Okay, Kelsey can do that then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, uh, per the management agreement with, uh, the DLCC, the budget and rates have to be approved by the city council, so that's why that's on the agenda for this evening. Um, really Peter went through most of the budget. And again, if you look at, uh, your packet, there's, uh, some financial bullet points that are included. I think he touched on a lot of those. Again, you know, basically budgeting a loss for next year and that's estimated at thirty percent reduction in membership, so hopefully that can be achieved or, or, um, or better upon. And then basically the membership side, there is no rate increases being proposed. So, um, I can take any questions you may have, but I think between, uh, what's in your packet and what Peter explained is pretty much touches on all the high points.
Okay, any questions for Kelsey or Peter?
I've, I've got a comment. Uh, one, one of the things that, uh, when I got to report here for the community center, one of the things that I was concerned about is that this year the city of Detroit Lakes taxpayer is gonna be giving two-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand dollars, uh, to the community center. And, um, when the community centers first started, this was all gonna be, uh, self-sustaining. And, uh, that was the true for the ice arena, for the Detroit mountain, and also for the golf course. And so what would we do if all these entities asked for support of three-hundred-thousand dollars? It'd be quite a bail on the, uh, taxpayers. But the one thing that I was concerned about is that we're taking in less revenues and we're giving, giving raises. And most businesses, when your, when your revenues aren't coming in, most people don't get raises. And I know it's only two-and-a-half percent, but at the same time, we've gotta kinda keep an eye on the budget of what's going, so we don't come back next year and have to give out more money. I am thankful for the many sponsors that we have that, that give the support, uh, you know, the community center, but at the same time, uh, we have to tap our brakes on spending. We can't spend money that we don't have and we have to keep coming back and ask the city taxpayer. It's not, not right that we ask some of these people, 'cause some of these families are also struggling from the COVID. So I, I would hope that, uh, and we're looking at membership and we're basically looking at twelve-hundred-and-fifty members plus we have Silver Sneakers, but we're looking at a county of thirty-four-thousand people. And if, uh, our, if our city's citizens wanna have a community center, you're gonna have to start using it, because we need membership there to pay the bills. And, uh, without, uh, strong membership, it's gonna make things tougher. And same thing, uh, with the theater, if you wanted a theater, we have to fill that thing up. We can't go without having, uh, you know, we, we haven't had a, a profit in the theater for years and we need to do something to keep, keep that thing going. And to, to do that, we have to have people come in and use these, these properties that we have. And that, that is a concern about the amount of money that we're, that we're spending on it. And, uh, it's a good thing for the city, but it's only good if people use it, because we can't keep, uh, subsidizing it if people aren't gonna come in for a few people. And like I said, right now with, uh, thirty-four-thousand-five-hundred, I think, for Becker County population, twelve-hundred-and-fifty average over the last five years, that's not a lot of people using it. And that, that is a concern of mine. I know we're gonna go ahead and approve this budget tonight, but I just think that we've gotta beware. But I even mentioned to, to Peter at the, uh, meeting this afternoon that after twenty years, maybe it's good to have another set of eyes come in, have a consultant come in and look at us and see maybe something that we don't see of what we could do to, to bring more business into our community center. But we need to do something, because we can't keep going the direction that we are. And, uh, um, I think when you, when we're paying out almost three-hundred, two-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand, we're getting to the point where we, where we have to do something on it and that was, that was my concern.
If I could just make one correction to your comments, Ron, regarding the, the twelve-hundred-and-fifty, that was the number of contracts that we have? It's not necessarily the number of members, 'cause we have husband, we have couples, we have families. And so I don't have the exact number, what I've been told that's somewhere between, was between somewhere between thirty-five-hundred and four-thousand people. The other thing that's not counted is, uh, every day after school, there's tons of kids in there for dance lessons. There's kids in there that come in for youth, uh, uh, basketball. We have families in and out of there, we have events in and out of there. So I would, I would suspect that a much, much larger swath of the, our community uses the community center on a very, very regular basis. They might not be members, but they're, they're coming to events, they're coming to, uh, um, all kinds of things. The number of folks that are down in the, in the senior center, so it, I, I agree, we need to make sure the facility's used. I would just like to respectfully correct those, uh, statistics that you offered. Because it is a, it's, we, pre-COVID, about seven-hundred people coming through the door on a daily basis. I don't think there are many other locations in town that have seven-hundred people coming through the door. Right now, we're about three-hundred-and-fifty members are checking in and we hope to bring that back up.
Okay, Ron, do we have a motion?
Yes, um, the committee recommends that we go ahead in the-
Can I just ask a quick question?
Okay.
That two-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand you're referencing, a hundred thousand is coming from public utilities, correct?
That's correct.
So I don't know that that amount was accurate in terms of taxpayers. Um, I, I mean, I'm listening to this and I think, from the city's point of view, a hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar investment in that thing and operation and everything it provides our city, I think I'm absolutely in favor of continuing to, to help out.
And I, and then, I understand that, I'm just saying that if we had all of our other things, the mountain, the golf course, the ice arena, if they were all asking, it, it'd be tough to do this, 'cause it was supposed to be a self-sustaining venture, is when this thing was told to the taxpayers when this thing got started, so.
All right.
But anyway, the, uh, uh, we went ahead and considered to approve the DLCC budget and rates for two thousand and twenty-two and I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center budget rates for 2022. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Peter, thank you for coming this evening, we appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to move an item up on the agenda? I know there's a couple more people that have come in.
Sorry, we're just, can we do the public hearing?
Yep, we can do that. Is, is someone here for that, Priscilla?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on it.
Yep, why don't we, before I adjourn the meeting and call the order of a public hearing, why don't we hear from you first, Priscilla? All right?
Hello, I'm Priscilla. It's the first time I've seen some of the new council members, so hello. Um, so the item on four B, one, would be parcel, um, four-nine-one-six-eight-two-two-three-two. Uh, I initially sent a notification in January two thousand and twenty-one, uh, for a deadline to move the house for March thirty-first. Um, I spoke with the property owner, he needed additional time. We moved the deadline a couple of times and, uh, there you can see it's just on the east side of the Apex Apartments, or Apex Townhomes, uh, between Pelican Lane and Highland Drive. Does anybody have any questions as to where that's located? 'Cause it's not a physical address, it's, I, well, it's a physical address, it's just not a street address. Any questions? So, um, the deadlines were missed. Um, I spoke with, uh, the property owner on August twenty-seventh and I gave him the hearing notice for, um, tonight and we discussed getting the house removed by September tenth and that didn't happen, it's still there. And I believe there's a handout with a couple additional photos that I took on.
Yeah, the window's open, the door is open, the kids have been in it. I mean, it doesn't look like that specifically right now.
So in June, I had a couple calls, June and July, about, um, people going in and out of there from the tenants in Apex Townhomes and they're concerned about people coming in the, the paved drive from Pelican Lane and then other people coming from Highland Drive and meeting up at this home. Um, sometimes that window's open and sometimes it's not. Um, it's a hazard, it's an attracted, attractive nuisance to a lot of the, um, people that live at Apex and, uh-
Ma'am, could you, could you just wait till your turn, please?
Hi Dad, I don't have a break.
Well, that's how it works. Thank you.
So, uh, my request is for the council to declare the nuisance, um, vote to abate the nuisance and then charge the property owner for his service fee.
Okay, anything else? So at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting. I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comment on the alleged nuisance on parcel forty-nine-dash-sixteen-eight-two dash-two-three-two. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the issue? All right?
What are you missing?
This is, okay, yeah, it works. Uh, uh, yeah, so I was with, yeah, so we would go in there and the playground is kinda small and we kinda want-
You've got one of the hollers.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, that, I'm saying, like, we should just-
So ma'am, why, why don't you?
Okay. Is that we in the hall?
Okay, we've, we've been-
They've gone in it and tried to play in it and it's just unstable.
Yeah, ah.
That's all. Like, it's not safe and the doors are not boarded up.
Okay.
Like, at least have the doors boarded up and the police come and check out it, but they don't do anything about it.
Well, that's what we're gonna do tonight, okay?
Right, and like, so it'd just be nice if the doors were kept shut, so the kids don't go in there, like the ten-year-olds and the thirteen-year-olds and the kids that smoke cigarettes go in there that don't want their parents to know.
We're gonna deal with it this evening, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the, anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue? If not, that public hearing's closed and I would entertain- Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. You know, I should've got her name and address, but can I get your, can I get your name and address before you leave?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, I'm just, I'm more intro. Oh, so you want me to tell you?
Yes, please.
Okay, fourteen-thirty-two Apex Court.
And your name?
Carrie Bevo.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And sir, would, for our minutes, will you, um, state your name and address, please?
Um, I'm Gary Shonder. Um, that house is mine and the property it's sitting on, on the edge of Apex is mine.
Okay.
Um, I've been in contact with, uh, Priscilla numerous times and had, uh, Dave McCoy up by Ridgewood was gonna move it this spring early. Another gentleman from Wapton, uh, was gonna move it back in June. And then, uh, Schmidt Brothers did a, um, big move up at Kenny's Candy here about a month and a half, two months ago, and they were gonna get it out of there on their way through back to Fargo. And I said, Priscilla's been, you guys have been cool to work with and everything that way, but like I said, I've been getting one broken promise after the other. Um, I did speak with Ryan, um, this afternoon about possibly burning it. Um, we're gonna meet over there, probably this week and see what the options are that way, um, to get rid of it. But I said, I, I've had things scheduled and set up and people no show. And I said, I apologize for that, the city's been great. Um, but, um, I'm gonna, like I said, hopefully in two weeks here, I've got a game plan and I can come up, it's either gonna get burned, it's gonna get crushed, or it's gonna get moved, um, and get out of there. So, but like I said, that's where it's sitting now and I said, I can get back to you guys, Priscilla, here in a week or two, as soon as I know exactly and I've got something signed that, um, of what direction we're gonna go. But I said, it will be out of there. So I apologize for the nuisance and troubles it's caused in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So, Kelsey, if we abate the nuisance this evening, how long will that house be there? And what opportunity would he, the owner, have to take care of it himself?
So Mayor and Council, if you look at the resolution that's before you, uh, should've been sent on the desk. If you look at page two, uh, basically what this resolution would establish, an abatement order that, uh, the property owners to remove it before September thirtieth, which is a little over two weeks from today. And then failure to remove it by September thirtieth would basically, uh, the city would then take steps necessary to have it removed and then bill to the property owner.
So if we move forward with the abatement served this evening, it sounds like you have a little bit of grace period till about September thirtieth to deal with it yourself. And then after that, uh, the city's gonna take over from there. That's if we pass a motion to abate it this evening. Okay? So with that, I would entertain a motion from the council and then I'll open it up for further discussion from just the council.
I so moved the re- abatement for that particular home.
And the resolution we're talking about would be Resolution Number 2021-0914U, the resolution declaring a nuisance, ordering an abatement, assessing cost, and a service fee, and I would second that motion.
Okay. Is there further discussion by the council? Everybody understands what the program is? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah.
Ma'am, do you have something that you'd like us to take up? There's a chief, will you pass this gal here in front of you? No, okay, well, we'll move back to the stuff I skipped over at the beginning. First of all, we have the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 13th, 2021. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes or corrections or additions of the minutes from the August 13th meeting? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval as printed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the council meeting held August 13th, 2021. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Excuse me. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. When I'm like 97, you think I'll still be repeating that when I sleep? So the consent agenda is before the council, is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to add or remove any items? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to the Community Development Committee and Chairman Boeck.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5A is an update on the extraterritorial subdivision ordinance. After discussing this at the CDC yesterday, we feel it's a recommendation to direct staff to stop processing the applications for the two-mile extraterritorial based on the attorney general's opinion that came back. So that's our update on that. Kelsey, was there action to take on that?
I think if the council's okay with the consensus of the CDC to proceed that way, we'll direct staff to basically stop processing those parcel splits within the two-mile area and direct them to the county for the process, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What's the process for somebody that lives in that two-mile area and wants to have something done with their land? Who would they who would they go to then for the people that would need that information if they need to do something?
Since the townships have adopted their own subdivision regulations, they have also entered into agreements with Becker County to process those applications for them. So we would direct the owners that want to split their property to Becker County.
So the city would no longer be on the committee or board with them or anything then, for right now?
Correct.
For right now.
Okay.
Okay. Item 5B, discussion relative to the annexation of property of 15937 and 15985 Long Lake Road. It is 100% surrounded by the city of Detroit Lakes. At this point, that was just discussion. Kelsey, anything else?
Yeah, mayor and council, so there's no action item, because that requires a public hearing and an ordinance adoption to actually do that annexation, since it's surrounded by 100%. So it was just a discussion item at CDC to make sure that, you know, basically, the committee was okay with proceeding with doing the notices and going down the path of doing the public hearing ordinances.
All right. Item 5C, consideration to a resolution approving the acquisition of tax fortified lot 49-7001-007 for $10,000. We discussed it at CDC and give it a positive recommendation, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the acquisition of tax fortified parcel, $10,000. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next topic is 5E, consideration to a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a short-term rental of two-bedroom home at 926 West Lake Drive. This was discussed at CDC, we feel that this is worthy of a recommendation, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow short-term rental at 926 West Lake Drive. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 5G, consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow two tracts of less than 7,500 square feet in an R2 district at 202 and 210 North Street East. Mr. Remen, any updates on that, please?
Essentially, there's a single lot that has two houses on it. The owner would like to be able to split that tract into two pieces, they would demolish the house that's on the corner, and they would have one with the house on it, and then the vacant lot that could be used for residential purposes.
This was discussed, and it was a positive recommendation at CDC, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a variance to allow two tracts of less than 7,500 square feet in an R2 district at 202 and 210 North Street East. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 5H, consideration to a resolution denying the rezoning of R2, 1 and 2 family residential district to B2, general business district at 202 and 210 North Street East. Larry?
This is that same parcel, and the owner would like to try and rezone that to commercial. The planning commission recommended denial of the zoning change, they would like to see it left as residential. And the Community Development Committee had the same recommendation.
We came to the same findings as planning commission with a denial to move it to R2. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny the rezoning from R2 to B2 at 210 and 200 North Street East. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 5I, consideration to a resolution approving a final plat approval for common interest community number 96, Long Pine Community. This was discussed, and a positive recommendation at CDC, so I so move.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the final plat of a common interest community number 96, Long Pine Community. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nothing else, Your Honor?
Thank you. One of the Public Works, Chairman Tsuki.
Yes. Item A, consideration to the first reading of ordinance 482, amending the city code section 1001A, city beach relative to parking boats overnight on the beach. City staff had looked at this and determined that probably the best way to go would be to use the same hours that the city beach has as posted hours, which are 2:00 AM to 5:30 AM. So the ordinance will state that parking boats overnight on the beach will not be allowed between 2:30 and 5:00. Public Works agreed with that, and so moves.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance 482, amending the city code relative to city beach park, or parking boats in the city beach overnight. And it was 2:00 to 5:30, or 2:00 to 5:00?
No, 2:00 to 5:30 was.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and first reading of ordinance 482 is given.
Item B was quite a lengthy discussion, consideration to the lease amendment with Minnesota Department of Public Safety regarding leased space for commercial driver's license skill tests. Those skill tests have been taking place in the North Industrial Park, and it's becoming quite a hazard for businesses that are out there, and we have directed staff to discuss with the Department of Public Safety that maybe they could find some other alternatives to do that, and we intend to deny or to not renew the lease. So, and Public Works moves for that.
Sir, a second.
I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to not re.
Not renew.
Renew the lease agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety regarding space for commercial driver's license skill tests. Discussion on the motion.
Well, I just want to mention, this is for new truck drivers, and so it was getting to be kind of hazardous between businesses and deliveries and everything else, so that's the reason for it. And we, we want to work with MinDOT and give them some time to find another lot to do their practicing on, but right now, it's not the, the businesses out there requesting that they would find a new spot, so we'll try to help them out.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consideration to the development agreement with Haug Inc. to construct a sanitary sewer and water main at 534 U.S. Highway 59 North. John, why don't you just explain a little bit about this?
Certainly. Mayor and council, Haug Inc. has purchased a new shop or office on Highway 59 North, and it's not currently served by city sewer and water. We have some just to the south, the Oak Hills addition, and Haug approached the city about extending that sewer and water. They're a contractor, we often hire them to do this sort of work, so we've executed a development agreement whereby they would actually perform the work and install the sewer and water, subject to plans that were prepared by the city engineer's office. We're getting the permits, Haug has worked, helped out actually with getting the easements and things like that that we needed to get those utilities extended. So at this point, this is kind of the final piece to that puzzle, and we'd execute this, and then Haug would extend some sewer and water to not only his shop, but also to some of the adjacent businesses at his cost, so.
Thanks, John. Public Works reviewed this yesterday and moves to give consideration to that development agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to consider, or to enter into a development agreement with Haug Incorporated to construct a sanitary sewer and water main at 534 U.S. Highway 59 North. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item D is consideration to a resolution setting an improvement hearing for October 12th, 2021 at 5:00 PM for West Lake Drive. That's County 6 to the Pelican River. Public Works moves to set that improvement hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set an improvement hearing for October 12th at 5:00 PM for the West Lake Drive project from County 6 to the Pelican River. Discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item E is consideration to a resolution approving a preliminary engineering report for Pinewood Estates and setting a public hearing for October 12th. Public Works reviewed this yesterday and approves ordering the preliminary engineering report and setting the public hearing for October 12th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to.
Order a preliminary engineering report.
Approve the resolution establishing a preliminary budget and tax levy and designated December 14th, 2021 at 6:01 PM as the date for public comment of a budget and proposed levy.
We're adopting it, it's already been done, so we're adopting it.
You jumped a page.
Did we jump?
No.
The mayor did.
Oh.
I jumped a page, I'm sorry.
Okay. You're back.
We are back for Pinewood Estates.
Thanks.
Yes.
I'm digging around with my phone, and I get goofed up, see?
That's what happens when you get to be our age.
So let's do a redo here.
Okay. Public Works moves to adopt a preliminary engineering report for Pinewood Estates and set a public hearing for October 12th, 2021.
And there was a second, right?
Yes, there was.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item F, consideration to approving the bids for the new Public Works facility site work and awarding the contract contingent upon agreements being approved. Kelsey, want to just kind of basically review this? This is with the county.
Yes, mayor and council, the county went out for bids for doing site grading on both of our sites, both the county highway department site and the city's Public Works facility site. Bids came in very favorably, so the recommendation would be to award the low bid to Haug Inc. And in addition to that, we should have received a handout, which is the cost share agreement between the city and the county. Recommend approval of that in the same motion, and basically, this just explains who's paying for what. We're basically splitting the cost of the site grading 50/50, and that's what the cost share agreement spec spells out.
Public Works moves to approve the bid for that new Public Works facility site work and awards the contract contingent upon the agreements all being approved.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bids for the new Public Works facility site work and awarding the contract contingent upon agreements being approved of the county. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The last item is, of course, calling on our city engineer to give us a monthly project status report.
Mayor and council, the status report's in your packet, I'll just run over some of the highlights of that. West Lake Drive, Legion to 6, we continue to have some activities there, trying to resolve the disputes with the right-of-way with some of the adjacent property owners, so there's continuing action there and dialogue going back and forth. Along with that, the quiet title process is still happening, so we'll see what another month brings there. West Lake Drive, from County Road 6 to the Pelican River, we just took action on that, setting a hearing for next month, again, sort of eyeing up construction on that portion as well next year, so conceivably, we would have a reconstruction project that would extend on West Lake Drive all the way from Legion to the Pelican River if everything goes as planned. Berquist subdivision, or the Ridgeview subdivision, that project we have started, or the contractor has started work on that, unfortunately, we are running into some supply and material issues, which is not uncommon to anybody right now. This is no different, so they're waiting for some manholes and hydrants and things like that before they can really get rolling. But I do expect that they'll be able to resume work on that, probably maybe the middle of next week or so. Still a good chance that we can get that done this year, but we're starting to run a little short. South Washington Avenue, I can report that one is basically wrapped up, we've issued the final payment to the contractor, I shouldn't say that, we've, we're processing the final payments to the contractor, I expect that'll probably be returned to the city for issuance here next month, but that one's wrapped up, lights are in the sailboat monument now, and so I think we've checked all the boxes and completed that project. The same is true with Long Pine Estates, that project is completed, we've sent the paperwork for final payment to the contractor, just awaiting that return. The Brisland subdivision, the developers have executed a development agreement with the city, and at this point, I'm waiting for them to submit some plans and specs and other calculations and things like that for our review before we approve that, and then authorize them to proceed with construction on that, but that project is being developed or built and financed outside of the city, if you will, so it's just subject to our review and approval on that. Willow Homes for AZ Street project, or Willow Street project is underway. Again, the goal for this year would be to complete the improvements from Cheryl Street down to Rossman Avenue, we are gonna hold short of Rossman Avenue, which is a little tweak from previous, we'll stop short of Rossman and then finish the rest next year. They've got a good chunk of the sewer and the water done, the rain hasn't helped things, that's made things a little challenging down in the lower areas, had some mud and things like that to contend with, but it's moving along, we did get our permits from the railroads, so that was a big win last week. Longbridge Heights Phase 4, MM CDC has indicated to me that they do not plan to proceed with that project, so I'll remove that from the project list at this point. Lake Forest, 7th Edition, project's pretty well complete for the year, it's paved, all the utilities are in. They're, I think, gonna work on the seeding and the turf restoration starting tomorrow, so by the end of this week, things should be pretty wrapped up for the year out there. Then there will be the final wear course, and then the overlay on 270th that'll be completed next year. Highland Drive, we're continuing some discussions with Becker County, who's been sort of working with Detroit Township, trying to get all of us together on how that project's gonna unfold, and who's sort of gonna take the lead on that. At this point, I think we're trying to target myself and other city staff getting together with the county and township next week, just try to. next week to try to start hammering out that. Again, eyeing that for construction next year. So we need to get moving on that. Likewise, we had some discussion on the Willow Springs project at Public Works yesterday. We had our public input meeting in July. There was some support from the city council at that point to proceed with a street improvement project. If you recall, the residents were not in favor of sewer and water at this time out there. So we were looking more at a street improvement project. And at least the preliminary discussion was to do that next year. After some discussion and some recommendations from city staff, we're looking at probably pushing that back a year or so. Just because we've had a lot of other projects that were scheduled for this year that got pushed into next year. So the plate is pretty full for next year when you start pushing the Willow and, and Homes and Fraser Street project in there and the Westlake Drive projects and some of that stuff that's going to sort of linger over into next year. So that's the path, I believe, we're, we're heading down for that.
Questions for John?
And John's going to mention on South Washington, we still have those lights coming on the Roundabout at MMH.
Yeah, Sean's ordered the, the LED bordered yield signs and they are still on back order, so.
Okay, any further questions, Matt?
I guess with those lights, do we, they're blinking lights, they're what, 14,000? Do we still need them?
Well, I tell you what.
We've been through the busy part of the summer and there hasn't been any accidents that I'm aware of.
You see that big pole in front of MMH three Sundays ago? Somebody went right over the top of it, they ran through the intersection, almost had a collision there. It's, it's still needed.
I don't think blinking lights will take care of that.
Well, people are still driving without seat. And I, I think we voted for it, we should go ahead or like we approved it.
I think we should reevaluate that and look at it, seeing it's been a summer with, I don't know, Chief, any accidents here wherever, have seen?
Well, I pulled it down on that just the other day and there were six crashes at the Roundabout since October of 2021.
Okay.
One, one was a motorcycle one which had minor injuries, but it reduced treatment. The rest of them were just property damage.
Okay. I guess to me, that's, if we've been through the busy summer, we should maybe look at that and save the gap.
Well, it was two, two years ago, we were concerned about three accidents after 10 years on, down at, before we stopped at Holy Ass. And here we've had 16 in less than a year, but so.
I think that wasn't a report that we saw, nor the numbers we'd seen in there. So I guess, like I say, I think we look at just this project. I don't think it's worth spending the money on that, seeing we've been through a big tour summer, busiest time for Detroit Lakes, and there was no major accidents or anything of concern.
So Sean, can we still cancel it? And do you know what the status is as far as if we can, can even cancel it?
I, I keep asking them about every other week, calling them up. I, I, I'm not sure where they're at, if they're still backordered. If they're still backordered, I'm assuming possibly we could cancel them. But if they're in transit, I doubt we can cancel.
We did discuss this in Public Works yesterday. At this point, we're, we're in a, like, we don't really know whether we could even do that. I think the, the thing to do is for Sean to do a little bit of investigating about that. Then we make our mind up.
Yeah, there was no recommendation from the committee to cancel it at this point.
It was just a discussion because...
What was the total on that?
14,000.
14,000.
Yeah, for both, for both intersections. But I, I'm just saying, go down there and if you're walking with your kids or bicycles, whatever, you need, you need something to warn those people out there, it's still happening.
I kind of, I kind of agree with Matt. If we could save 14 grand and we just got through the busiest time of our, our season and, you know, if he can save 14 grand, we got to look at saving 14 grand.
Well, you know what, you guys? If you feel strongly about it, you can always make a motion. Somebody can second it and we can vote.
I'd make a motion to, if we can cancel those signs, I would be in favor of that.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is made to cancel it and it's been seconded, if we can still cancel it. Further discussion?
Well, if we've had six accidents down there, I, I think that's justification that we can save an accident or save something like 14,000 for lights. We've got two intersections, I mean, that's a small price to save an accident.
Further discussion? I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think the motion fails, so.
Yeah.
Keep those signs on, Sean.
It's always nice to have a lively discussion here at the council. Do we need to do any action on the city engineer's report?
Nothing.
Okay. Anything else, Madeline?
Nothing. From Public Works.
Okay, we'll move to the finance committee. Chairman Zeman?
Okay, item 78, consideration to the approved DMRA management agreement. The committee reviewed this and we're, ran an approval. And I'm going to, Heidi, you want to talk on that or Kelsey on the agreement? Because we also have one agreement, we have to need to talk with Charles on part of that too, so.
Yeah, mayor and council, I guess it depends how much you want to cover on the DMRA management agreement. It is slightly different than what the previous agreement was. If you recall, the agreement expired earlier this year. The council authorized, we were basically operating on a month-to-month agreement the last few months because we were waiting for some proposed changes from the attorney representing the DMRA. We had a chance to review those changes. Some of them are being incorporated, some of them are not. Some of them, we thought, maybe provide a little, little too much exposure or more exposure to the city. So we opted not to accept those changes. So in a nutshell, it's basically a little bit different than what the old agreement was, with some recommended changes from the DMRA attorney, but not all those changes are included. We can go much deeper than that if you would like.
That's plenty good, thank you. Ron?
Okay, the committee recommends approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve the DMRA management agreement. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
Next item, item C, consideration to a resolution establishing preliminary budget and tax levy collection for 2022 and designating December 14th, 2021 at 6:01 P.M. As the date for public comment on the budget and the proposed levy. The committee recommends an ISO move and who wants to handle this? Heidi?
Yep.
I already took care of it 10 minutes ago.
We tried to, right?
And I should mention that we need seven, seven people tonight to approve this. We, we need the two-thirds of the total council, even though Dan Smith, and we still need seven votes tonight to approve the preliminary budget here.
Thank you, Chair Zeman. So just to kind of give a background on the preliminary 2022 budget and tax levy process. We started meetings back in August, publicly posted those meetings and invited all the council to attend if they so chose. We met five times and established some goals, reviewed each of the city's funds, revenue and expenditures for 2022. And then, you know, discussed some potential variables that are at play for 2022 and beyond. And with that, the committee landed on, landed on an increase in the proposed tax levy for the city to be 8.22% as you can see with the handout that I've, I've provided this evening and is up on the screen. This increase funds a couple of things for 2022. So one would be the addition of a parks employee. That's a full-time position that would be added to our current staff. We felt that was needed just based on the amount of park land and facilities that have been added in the past number of years. And we haven't added any staff to accommodate and maintain those facilities. So to try to keep our facilities up to par, we'd like to, we'd like to add that parks full-time employee for 2022. Another item that was discussed at the committee meetings was the local government aid received by the city of Detroit Lakes. So in the past, we had received a sizable amount of LGA, somewhere in the 1 to 1.5 million dollar range. Due to the way the formula is written, our aid has declined over the years and is somewhere in the $500,000 range for 2022. That's maintained at the same level as it was for 2000, or, excuse me, for 2021, only because the legislature approved a one-time hold harmless law that basically keeps our LGA funding consistent from '21 to '22. Had that not gotten passed, the city would have seen a 97, approximately $97,000 decrease in our LGA. And as the, as the committee discussed this, we are looking toward the future and trying to determine the best route on this because if this funding, or, excuse me, if this formula is not adjusted, the 2023 amount of LGA will then go down not only by the 97,000 we were slated to lose in '22, but also another potential approximate 97,000 for 2023 as well. And so to kind of head off any sort of potential, you know, large increase in 2023, the committee decided that it might be prudent to include that 97,000 into the tax levy for '22, even though we aren't necessarily losing it for '22. The other item that's changed in the 2022 proposed budget and tax levy is not directly levied by the city. However, the city does have to give consent. If you recall, Kent Kurt Kena from the DLHRA was at a council meeting a couple of months ago and presented a new program that they would like to implement, which would help, help improve existing affordable housing in the city of Detroit Lakes. Would provide zero interest loans to certain folks to fix up their property. For instance, a new roof or replace HVAC systems, foundation repairs, things like that, to help maintain our affordable housing stock. The committee discussed this and decided that a level that they were comfortable with for this new program was $120,000. So that would be a new levy levied again by the HRA. This wouldn't be included in the city's levy amount and would be shown separately on tax statements. But that is also something that the council does have to consent to in order to enact that levy. That would add another 1.97% onto the city's previous levies. So by per Minnesota statute, the city council does have to approve and certify to the county by September 30th, the preliminary tax levy and preliminary budget for the next year. The preliminary levy is the highest that the levy can be. However, it can be decreased subsequently after the preliminary levy is approved. Once the council decides on a levy and budget to approve this evening, I will then relay that information to the county, who then prepares proposed tax statements in 20, for 2022. Those are mailed out to all property tax, or, excuse me, property owners in November of this year. Following that, we would have a truth and taxation hearing in December. Part of the resolution this evening before you is to designate December 14th at 6:01 P.M. As the date for public comment on the budget and proposed levy. That again is, is something that's written in statute and that is the regular council meeting in December. After that is, that meeting is held, the council will then consider and approve a final budget and levy. And then that information is then relayed to the county and the state. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Heidi? Pretty straightforward, I guess, thank you. And thank you for all your work on the budget process. And thank you to all the council members that attended all the meetings. I know it's early time of the day, so thank you. So, Ron, the item is to go ahead and...
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll do, a committee reviewed this and we recommend for the resolution establish the preliminary budget, like we said. And I made a motion that if somebody seconded, I need, we need a second on that then. So I make a motion to go ahead with the resolution approving the preliminary budget on December 14th at 6:01 P.M.
Second.
The motion is to adopt a preliminary budget levy and then we'll designate December 14th at 6:01 for the truth and taxation hearing, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And we got the HRA levy.
Okay, the next item is the consideration resolution granting the city council consent for an HRA levy. The committee recommends an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve a resolution granting city council consent for the HRA to levy a home REAP program levy. Further discussion?
I, I just want to say that this, this project is something that's been needed in Detroit Lakes for many years. We have a lot of working, poor people that work hard every day. They're low-income people, they're vulnerable adults, they're sometimes disadvantaged. They don't, they've got a house that's probably a, a low-priced house and they, these people don't make enough money to go out and actually, some of them can't qualify alone. But what this, this will do is help these people do minor repairs and help them with that. And in order that HRA can do this program, they set this thing up for us, they do all the work. And then how this, how they get their money back when the people come to sell their home, whenever that may be. Then when they sell the house, they'll get their money back for doing the, the work on this house. But I, I feel it's something very important. I hope everybody will go ahead and approve this to, to help the working poor. So I, what I say, it is actually helping a lot of people that need. And if we didn't have this low-income housing, I don't know where we would put these people if we didn't have these houses because they don't make enough money to pay rent for a lot of them. So it's something that is needed for our community and many communities are doing it. This, this will be something new for us here in Detroit Lakes.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And let's see here, it looks like consider resolution to amending the bylaws of the Detroit Lakes Fire Department Relief Association to provide for an additional $1,500 per year for a lump sum pension of $9,800 for each year effective April 1st, 2022. And I'm going to have our fire chief, Ryan Swans, to come up and make a few comments on then, why this is so important in order to keep our firemen wanting to keep volunteering.
Yeah, good evening, council. So for starters, the relief fund is really what we're approving tonight is, if something were to happen as far as the market and stuff like that and that fund were to go bad, then the city would have to cover that money. This money is done by through the 2% from the state aid money and then through the investments that the Fire Department Relief Association does and then also with our fundraising and stuff like that. So the money that is going into this account is not coming from the city, out of a budget, stuff like that. But if the stock market were to crash, what we are asking for is you to endorse the account and go from there. With this, what really happens is the department and the city have agreed upon that we want about 110%, in, in our account. So when we go over 110%, we bring it back down to around 110%. So we are, even yet with this, this bump, we are still overfunded in the account. So, you know, so that's, that's what we're asking. Is there any questions on this?
Any questions for the chief?
Where did the additional 1,500 come from? I mean, is this incremental steps that we do or is this every three years we throw X amount towards this?
So basically, it's, it's, there's liabilities in our account. Obviously, how many members we have, what their types of service they are. We don't get fully vested till we actually hit 20 years. So you have to be five years on to even get anything. And then it's about two or three to 4% per year up to 20 to get fully vested. So you have to take all that into consideration. So obviously, we have so much money. And then every year, we get money from that 2%. We get, that money is invested in the stock market. This last year, we did 13% in the stock market. I think it was 11, 13%, something like that. So we really did well in the stock market. So when you take all this in there, well, then that account keeps growing and growing and growing. Well, we need to bring it back down. Well, how we bring it back down is by taking a bump because eventually we'll be so overfunded that it's not right. And then we're not really doing what's right by our membership because we're supposed to keep that, that account in check. So does that answer your question?
So, so Matt, they have pretty significant oversight in these investments and stuff. It's in pretty good shape.
Yes. And last year with COVID, we actually took no gains? And last year with COVID, we actually took no gains, because we were like, eh, we put everything at a zero growth, because we were, we had nobody retiring, everything was already laid out for the ones that were retiring. So we really held back, thinking that the stock market was going to crash with COVID. So we act went with zeros. Well, we all, if you've got investments, know the stock market has done really well, which so have we. You know, so then obviously, we kind of went, whoop, so.
Okay, Ryan, thank you.
And I'd just like to say that this is probably the biggest tool that Ryan Swanson, the fire chief, has to get volunteers, because these fellows put a lot of work in. We've got a great volunteer fire department, we found that out on Friday. We knew that before, when we saw him in action, they saved that building. But we need volunteers to keep coming, and this, this is what brings them there. If we didn't have this type of fund to support this retirement plan, I don't think we'd have many people on that fire department, because it gives them something for all the work to do, the Wednesday night practices and all that stuff. So it's something that they certainly should have, and I, I hope everybody supports it.
Okay, did we get a motion?
Question.
Pardon?
I just had a question, once you get your.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Just, I wondered if you had any comments as finance officer.
Sure, yeah. So what Ryan has said is obviously true. I mean, the Relief Association, so they have this special fund which holds, you know, their funds so that they, when they do retire, and if they are vested in the, in the fund, they receive a lump sum pension for their active, based on their active years of service, and that lump sum pension is calculated based on their years of service, based, times the percentage based on their vesting schedule, and then that is multiplied again by this amount per year of active service. So I think what Ryan was trying to articulate was that there's a calculation that's done each year by the Relief Association and, and their accountant, accounting firm, which lets them know what level of funding they're at based on their current obligations. So based on the current firefighters that are on roster and their years of service, their total liability is X amount. As Ryan mentioned, last year, when we were looking, we, we review this lump sum pension amount annually, and last year, as they were reviewing this, they wanted to be very conservative because they weren't quite sure if there were going to be major hits in the stock market and whatnot, and wanted to make sure that their pension was still fully funded at a, at a comfortable level. So last year, there was an increase of $500 per year to the rate. This year, as he mentioned, you know, they, they did a lot better than they had anticipated in their conservative estimates. And so that's why this year, they're, they're looking at bumping it up quite a bit more than they had in the past, just based on their current liabilities, where they're looking at, you know, their funding percentages are still looking quite good. And the reason why the city needs to, you know, approve a resolution allowing this is if, for instance, something catastrophic happened, the city would have to make up any difference that would be owed to those firefighters, should their, their pension fund not be able to fund all their liabilities. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, I think we need a motion and a second.
Okay, yes, the committee recommends to approve the resolution amending the bylaws the Detroit Lakes Fire Department Relief Association to provide an additional $1,500 per year for a lump sum pension of $9,800 for each year effective April 1st, 2022. Nice, nice move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution amending the bylaws of the Fire Department Relief Association to provide additional lump sum pension contributions. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, I'm also going to have Heidi just give us a brief update, how we're coming on our financial reports, how we're coming with payment on the police department, and all schools, and how food and beverage and so forth on that. She could.
Sure. Sorry, let me, let me pull up my reports here. So in your packet, there are the, the regular monthly reports that we usually provide. As, as we discussed in the finance committee, the general fund is kind of right on track with where we thought we would be, so nothing, nothing glaring there. Excuse me. Looking at the food and beverage tax, that one's quite interesting to follow, you know, based on COVID and, and some of the restrictions that were in place last year, we were, we were hoping that we would see some bounce back for our food and beverage tax receipts. That's proving to, to have, to be happening. For instance, July, we have, so how this works is the state gives us an estimated payment, and then after all of the tax returns are submitted, they will send us a follow-up final payment. And so if you look at July in particular, under 2021, that dollar amount is actually, you know, about $15,000 more than it was in 2020, which no surprise, COVID, you know, there wasn't a whole lot going on last year. But if you look at a more normal year, so look back at 2019, we're still actually over where we were in 2019 by a fairly significant dollar amount. So it kind of goes to show you that the establishments in town are selling food and drink, and there are tax dollars being generated from those efforts. Any questions on the food and beverage? Otherwise, I'll move on to the local option sales tax. Again, this is the tax that was enacted in October 2019 to help pay back the bonding for the new police department facility. Again, we have final numbers through June 2021. Those numbers are outpacing 2020 numbers at a fairly significant rate. January through June, 21 versus 2020 is up about $185,000, so even more than we, than we collected last year, which we thought we were doing awesome last year. So that facility, as I am calculating out now, it looks like we'll be able to pay off those bonds for the PD facility by about May of 2023, when the bonds were originally set to expire and be paid off in February of 2028. So a significant reduction in the time that, that the city is, is needing for that tax to pay back that bond obligation. And then finally, there's the liquor store monthly sales report. August figures are on there. Randy can probably attest to anything, should you have any questions on this. But again, the liquor store sales are, are doing quite strong. You know, even one would think, you know, if food and beverage tax receipts are, are up quite a bit, you might expect that the liquor store receipts are down a little bit, but that's not the case. Once again, in August, the liquor store sales were up 1.62% from 2020, which, you know, were record figures at that point. So those are my finance reports, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the Fanchels, Heidi? All right, thank you. Anything else, Ron?
No, they're all, I know.
Any action items on the public safety? I don't believe there is, is there? Nope. We'll go to the liquor gambling control committee.
We have, I should say that we did have a discussion point on public safety, and that, that involved students parking in the neighborhoods instead of in the high school parking lot. I understand they did get permits now for the students to park in the high school lot, and we hope that'll take the pressure off parking in neighborhoods. But if you're a parent out there and your child's driving a car, please tell them, don't park in the neighborhoods, park in the, in the high school parking lot, that's why they have it there, and that's what we want on there. It's just too much commotion with kids smoking and noise and so forth, so we, we don't want to have to go and put signs up we don't have to. So this is the start of parking in that parking lot at the high school now, please use that. And if you do that, we won't have to do anything, otherwise we might have to come back and do something.
Okay. So we'll move to the liquor gambling control committee.
Liquor gambling, most of it was consent agenda other than item 9A, which is the update on the city's 150th celebration. Kelsey, I'm going to take a swing at this, we can keep this moving. Basically, as we spent half the budget on the 150th Sesko Tenny, we're doing great there, we're having a community celebration Saturday, the 25th, and Sunday, the 26th at the pavilion. There will be dancing, there will be polka and pie, there will be bands, there will be a beer garden. By God, come down and enjoy yourself. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Nicely done, thank you.
One, Alderman Zeeman's probably going to jump in here, you take it away.
Okay, here, here's the deal now, this is, you know, we've made the whole loop now, this is the Oktoberfest. Everything's gone well, we had the April event, then we had the July event, this is going to be the September event, and for us to pull this off, we need volunteers to help the committee. And I said, well, we'll have no problem getting the people from the city council signed up. We've got two shifts, a three to five shift, we actually have three shifts, a three to five, a five to seven, and we have a three to seven shift, you can help all along. But if you can help, please see Carrie or myself, so we can get, because we do need the volunteers, and it's going to be a fun event, and you're all welcome to come, you'll probably be there anyway. And so if you can help out on this, it would be very much appreciated, and I know a lot of you will, so please come and see us and sign up for that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Matt?
No, that's it.
So we're going to jump down to the public utilities commission, there's a couple items there, Madeline?
Item A, consideration to approving a resolution setting the 2022 water rates. There's a good explanation by our public utilities manager in the packet, please refer to that. There has been a water rate study that was done in 2018, and so this is just continuing on with the, what the water rate study indicated we should be doing. So the Public Utilities Commission looked at that and approved it there, and now we're asking the city council to approve setting the 2022 water rates.
And that's a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution setting the 2022 water rates. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item B, consideration to a resolution to declare the intent of the city of Detroit Lakes slash Detroit Lakes Public Utilities to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city slash Detroit Lakes Public Utilities. This is a little difficult to understand, so I'm going to call on Heidi to kind of explain this.
Sure, so, so what's happening here is the city is doing a water meter replacement program, as many of you know. We're partway through that project, about 40%. Originally, when we had included this project in our capital plans and budgets, we did intend to bond for this project. The city did not end up issuing bonds for this project at any point yet, and it was, it was found that we, we hadn't passed this resolution that would allow us the flexibility to be able to bond for these expense, expenditures and pay ourselves back at a later date, should we decide to bond. So this is just a resolution that gives us that flexibility. It doesn't lock us into doing any bonding, it just gives us the ability to reimburse these certain expenditures on a go-forward basis by bond proceeds, should we choose to issue those bonds.
Public, the utilities commission this morning reviewed this, and we move, or I move to declare the intent.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution declaring the intent of the city and the city utility to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Consideration to a memo to purchase a Digger Derrick. And this is a budgeted item for 2022, however, we've discovered that if we order it now, we might be able to get it within 14 months or so. So decided rather than waiting until 2022 to order it, they'd order it now. So I move to purchase a Digger Derrick.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to purchase a Digger Derrick.
What is a Digger Derrick?
I knew somebody was going to ask that. Sure as the world, Vrenell will explain to you.
Like a ditch witch, or what?
No, it's a pole holder, it's a pole holder maker, pole setter.
All right, that's all I need to know.
It's a pole holder. They just think Digger Derrick sounds better than a pole holder.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
That is, yeah, that's about the most the public utilities have had for a long time.
Any city administration items that need to come before the council this evening, or other staff? No? I'd like to recommend the name of Matt Davis to be appointed to serve in the library board to take Lynn Hummel's spot. I would entertain a motion for.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Matt Davis to the library board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to reappoint Jamie Ericksen, Mark Ericksen, to the food pantry board, Ron Zeeman to the HRA board, and I would entertain a motion for approval of those two council members of those boards.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, appoint, reappoint Jamie to the food pantry and Ron to the HRA board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Carrie Johnson has decided not to continue on the library board, but we have some possible names.
HRA board.
The HRA board, I'm sorry. If you've got any suggestions for candidates there, I would certainly be open for those. I would like to recommend that Jim Sinclair Jr. be reappointed to the Police Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Jim Sinclair to the Police Civil Service Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item F is actually a clarification. We've already reappointed Dan, Madeline, and Gary to the DIMRA board, but we're just clarifying that those terms expire on April 30th, 2023, and this will be their third three-year term, final term. So is there a motion we need there, Kelsey?
Preferably, yeah.
So moved.
All right. Second that. Motion's been made and seconded to clarify the expiration date of those DIMRA terms. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to recommend the name of Rob Nielsen to serve on the arena commission to fulfill Ryan Tangenster. Because Ryan moved, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Rob Nielsen to the arena commission. Some announcements, the Detroit Lakes Chamber of Commerce is celebrating 100 years on Thursday, September 16th, from 4:30 to 6:30. If you'd like to go, you can let Carrie know if you plan to attend. The League of Minnesota Cities 2021 Fall Forum is in Burgess, Minnesota, on November 4th, from 1:30 to 7:00. Please let Carrie know if you'd like to attend. We already talked about the city's 150th celebration and the county's 150th celebration. We have a state House of Representatives bonding committee visit coming to Detroit Lakes. Kelsey, when is that?
On the 22nd of September.
Okay. And we, we've got some people that are planning on making some presentations to the committee? And what, what's the time?
Supposed to be here somewhere between 9:45 to 10:15, somewhere in there.
September what?
22nd.
22nd. It's my birthday, by the way.
Oh, my circle.
I, I want to say that for these bonding committees, it worked really well for Becker County when they came for the museum, and they were impressed at how many people were there. So we can get a good turnout, they, they do notice that, versus having only a handful of people. So if you can come for that half hour, 9:45 to 10:15, that really, it really helped that, that along. So if you can write that down and, and be there and tell your friends about, if anybody is interested in Washington Park and wanted to see an improvement there, please have them come.
South of Ballpark?
South of Ballpark, yeah.
Okay. The joint governance dates, the council meeting dates, and 22 city council meeting dates are also listed on the agenda. Anything else for the good of the order from the staff?
Can I say something?
Go ahead, chief.
I'll break a little bit. So I just want to, and again, I'm not a really good speaker, but I want to kind of give a little rundown about our fire on Friday, and how proud I am to serve with the other members of our fire department. So at 2:55, we were paged out to smoke coming through the ventilation at Glick's in the mall. For us, normally, smoke coming through ventilation system is a roof unit, AC unit that has a burnt-off belt. That's our common call. As I turn on Highway 10, obviously, a large plume of smoke, stuff like that. So how that progressed and how our members. So how that progressed and how our members worked with the other agencies, with the Detroit Lakes Police Department, the Becker County Sheriff's Department, the Frazi Fire Department, the Audubon Fire Department, Callaway, Vergis, Perm Fire Department, and how all those agencies work together to be the official that had to run or got to run that fire, I couldn't be more proud of all these members of all these communities. And it shows that, you know, we are a volunteer fire department, but we're professional firefighters. It's not, you know, there's career departments in my mind and there's volunteer departments in my mind, but everybody's a professional. And these guys really showed it on a day like this. We can't train for a downtown commercial structure fire and do these huge hose loads or lays and stuff like that. It's just stuff that doesn't, we can't do it, it takes too much resource. So how it all comes together and how it all works, I mean, to me, I could not be more proud to be the one that they appointed to serve as their chief and I hope everybody else is also as proud of these other members in their communities because everybody should be. Then I'm going to throw a little, if anybody wants to join, every fire department is always looking for memberships, so please reach out to somebody.
So where are we at with their number of firefighters?
Hopefully, twenty-six here shortly.
Okay.
So, but, so, all right, thank you.
One, one question for Chief Mayor. Hey, I'm very proud of you guys, great collaboration, great job for the media covering this. I was kind of disappointed, I thought this would be the inauguration run of the new ladder truck. Any update on that?
That should be it, they're still on task for around the end of the month, they ran into a little hiccup, they were about a week or so off and we're like, don't push it. My guys were really hoping to because they were, they struggled with that, the other truck, I mean, just more things were breaking on it. But as we, if we got to use it, we got to use it. We couldn't wait for perm negator because otherwise, we would have a bigger issue.
I'm very thankful we were lucky enough that that operated in that capacity that day.
Yep.
So, good to hear, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Laurie, did you ever find out when the library board meets?
We couldn't get into my computer in there, there were some issues, I don't know if, I don't know if Carrie was able to pull it up.
Well, this gentleman with the orange dress, he asked me and I told him I would try to find out. Do you want to just wait for a little bit? Get it to you? Anything else, Erin?
I'm good.
Wendy? Ron?
None, Your Honor. Well, I'm going to be sending this around again later here, I maybe I keep some phone calls here.
No, just a salute to the fire department, it's pretty awesome, pretty awesome.
One thing, one thing for Mr. King, South Shore Park, is that getting close or will that be wrapped up this year?
We're still waiting on some parts that are back ordered that have to go in the ground before they can put the rubber mat down in the play system. That we're still hoping to get done yet this fall and we are still hoping to get the concrete port for the sport court and the fence around it. We will have to wait for the coating of the lines to be done next spring.
Thank you. Natalie, anything else? Jamie? Dan? The business of this council has come to a conclusion. Uh-oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
More for understanding than anything else, and that is, what's the difference between at-large and a regular?
Five-eight and two-hundred-and-sixty pounds.
So we have three wards in the city.
Right.
There's three wards and there are two council members elected from each of those three wards for a total of six council members. Then there are three council members that are elected by the whole city. So the ward ones are just voted on by the people that live in that ward, but the three at-large are elected by the entire voters of the city.
Okay, thank you.
The business of this council has come to a conclusion, the meeting's adjourned.